Two minutes late, we are in closed session and stretched it a little far and I apologize for that, but we're here and ready to go, so we'll call this meeting to order. Do we have any closed session reports?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Commander, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lidster?
Here.
Councilmember Luvenos?
Here.
Councilmember Judge?
Here.
Mayor Protem Kavanaugh?
Here.
Mayor Mashburn?
Here.
And agenda review, everybody take a look at the agenda.
Mayor Mashburn, I'd like, I request that we move item HC to March 25th meeting. That's the federal legislative platform, and we want to talk about both federal and state, so I request we move it to March 25th.
Okay, HC. Yeah, I've got it over here. Okay, HC will move to March 25th.
And I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
Second. Call for the vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Do we have any declarations of conflict tonight or anything on the agenda from any council members? No? Okay.
Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, the next item on the agenda is to a public statements, and this is the time allotted for public statements or comments on all items other than public hearing items.
Okay, the rules are, as they have been now for a little while, you'll have three minutes to speak, and the yellow light come on when you're coming to the end, and then when the red light comes on, I'm not trying to be rude, but I'm going to go ahead and interrupt you and let you know that your time's up, and we'll do that for everybody. No one gets any special treatment, and in the name of keeping it fair for everybody. So please, don't be offended if I interrupt you and say your time's up, I'm just giving you a reminder. So with that, and also, once we start, no more cards can be taken, so don't come down and try putting in a card because you heard somebody speak and you want to speak just like they did, or you want to counteract. If you haven't put in your card by now, time's up, that's the end, we'll only go with the cards that are in. So at this time, we'll have the first speaker.
Yes, the first speaker we have tonight is John Lindsay, and after Mr. Lindsay is Maggie Kessley.
Councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen, I'm here to support the Free Clinic and the item that's coming up for consideration tonight. I'm John Lindsay, I'm a longtime member of the Rotary Club of Simi Valley and a board member of the Free Clinic of Simi Valley. I've spent all of my 23 years near Simi, serving on multiple nonprofit boards, including the YMCA, the Southeast Ventura County YMCA Corporate Board, the Boys and Girls Club of Simi Valley, Simi Valley Education Foundation, Rotary Club Charitable Foundation, the UCSB Economic Development Council of Ventura County, and United Way of Ventura County. And the one I am enjoying the most is the Free Clinic of Simi Valley. Mercifully, all of that time that I spent on those boards was in increments and it was divided up. I've been serving on this board for eight years, and while I enjoyed my time with the other boards, I love serving on this board. This board is special, the mission is special, we don't turn anyone away, we don't attend to hundreds, we attend to thousands, usually 13,000 to 18,000 medical visits per year. What is entirely interesting is the broad diversity of patients who come to see us. We don't ask for proof of insurance, or any papers for that matter. If you need medical attention, you get it, to the best of our ability and resources. Everyone on this board cares. What more noble endeavor than to help care for human beings that don't have the resources to care for themselves? Like the recently divorced mother of small children having a tough time eating her insurance deductible? Or the single mom who works just enough hours to squeak by but no medical coverage? How about the unemployed middle-aged gentleman who comes in with initial onset diabetes and he didn't know, but he wanted to get 10, he wanted to repair 10 rotten teeth? How about the children of, in an abusive household who sorely need qualified counseling? The stories with positive outcomes go on and on and on. That's why we all do it, we give back and we get an incredible good feeling when we make a difference. We're all now at a crossroads, the county of Ventura believes in us, we've committed to finishing the county's building on Royal, based on the strength of the city and community's goodwill and an amazing ability to reach out and care. We endured the possibility of being extinct in the last couple of years as an associated nonprofit had a very unexpected demise. It happened. Our board leadership one more time touched all the souls on our board, we stepped up again. Now we are heartily encouraged by the city's leadership that has extended a hand by considering this possibility with the great fund, grant funds it has to direct. Thank you for extending your hand with this invitation. Trustfully, we will have another wonderful 45 years to serve our citizens, we aim to never disappoint. Blessings.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsay.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, members of City Council, City Manager, and our City Attorney. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Free Clinic of Simi Valley, and I currently have the pleasure of serving as their president. I come before you guys tonight very humbled, and actually very overwhelmed, with the idea of the support that this council is considering this evening, and the support of other nonprofits that are here tonight to say that they would like to see this happen. This is emotional, because the road getting here has been hell, as most of you are aware. I can't even begin to tell you of the challenges and the issues that we have faced in the prior debacle, and the questions that still exist within this community that we are, that's hanging over our head like a dark cloud. I come today because I actually have endorsement letters by Big Brothers, Big Sisters, by Many Mansions, by Center for Spiritual Living. We also have the support, and we just don't have the letters yet, from Interface, the Coalition for Family Harmony. We have speakers here tonight from the YMCA, from the Samaritan Center, and Soaring Spirits Lost Foundation, who are in support of this. We also were given a pretty sizable generous donation by the Ventura Community College Foundation, and I wanted to share something with you. Many of you know Ted Weiner from TRC Medical. He wasn't able to be here tonight, and I want to speak on his behalf with his permission. He came up with a very compelling statement about our Capitol campaign. He called it a game changer, and he wants me to tell you why. This project has the ability to benefit the lives for decades. We're not talking about an investment of just one day, one month, or one year, we are talking decades. And it benefits many nonprofits, adding to the services that are already provided by the Free Clinic of Simi Valley. He says that this is the most comprehensible approach to the care of people in need in this community. I speak for myself personally, this has been a long road, and without trying not to have tears in my eyes, I just want to tell you thank you for even considering giving us this opportunity. It means the world to the Free Clinic and to our board. And I have copies of the letters that we've received so far that I can give to all of you, so thank you very much. And if there's any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Judy Bruce, and after Ms. Bruce is Tina Rivera, then Alice Biding.
Hello, Judy Bruce. I just want to say, we took three meter readings of three wireless cell towers, and they were on Wood Ranch, it was Sycamore, Wood Ranch Parkway, the Vineyards, and the clock tower. It was reviewed by our specialist, his conclusion, holy moly, this is unreal. He said he had never seen anything that high, ever. The electric voltage was off the meter, he said it was probably double or triple the amount. And all three of these towers were 250 feet to homes. We live in a big bowl of soup, electric power. Now you add the pressure of voltage per meter, and this messes up our body's electric system. It's poison. How much poison are we getting? This is a great analogy, that shows that the FCC guidelines only use rate. Take two glasses of water, and let's say we put two drops of poison per second in the glass. Glass one has just a smidge of poison, two drops. Glass two, we're going to put drops, two drops per second for 24 hours. Mayor Mashburn, which glass would you drink? Glass one is like driving by a tower. Glass two is living next to a tower, 24/7/365. This is a public health hazard, and means that the FCC guidelines are meaningless and they are false. There's two ways to fix this. We take the antenna and we move it away, and we redo it with fiber optics. Or we make the tower taller, and we lower the power, knock off 95%, and you can still make a phone call. And you want video? Well, you got fiber optics, or you got poison. Now wireless, and wireless is irresponsible in terms of energy and health, and it means death. The only winners here are the telecoms, they get to stay unregulated. The problem is these towers look innocuous, they don't show the amount of poison. It is bad, people will die in 10 years. A 50-year-old will die at 62, it should be 85. Kids that are playing in that park near the Vineyards, they'll die in their 20s or 30s. We need to fight this kill grid. It's hazardous, any home within 500 to 1,000 feet. You can make a phone call from a macro tower 3,000 feet away, there's no need to have them close to home. Internet of Things?
Thank you, Mrs. Bruce.
Oh, done already, wow, fast, okay.
When you're having fun, the time goes so fast.
It does.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to extend an invitation on behalf of Ventura Regional's Sanitation District's General Manager, Chris Tyson, and all of the Ventura Regional's Sanitation staff, to the City Council, your staff, and your community members. The invitation is for you to join us in a walk, to build a much-needed Ronald McDonald House, or actually a room, at the Ventura County Hospital in Ventura. The Ronald McDonald House would provide housing facilities for families of children receiving long-term medical care at Ventura County Hospital. It provides sleeping facilities, laundry, kitchen, et cetera, and it's free of charge to those families in their time of need. VRSD, as a leader in public service in the county, would love to see the unification of all public agencies, and so we are extending this invitation to all of the cities within Ventura County, because we realize that as public servants, our goal is to serve our residents as best we can, and I think that by unifying for that common purpose, we would do a great deal of benefit to all of the residents of Ventura County. And so this was initially started off by the Rotary Clubs within our area, I am a proud member of the Santa Paula Rotary Club as well, but this invitation does come to you as a public agency. The Walk for Kids is on Sunday, April the 7th, with the festivities beginning at 7:00 for registration and so forth, at the Buena Ventura State Park in Ventura. And I have informational cards and a lovely poster that I will leave with your city clerk here. And one other incentive for you to join us, is that we have developed an award called Leading with the Heart, and we are committed to coming and presenting that award to the government agency that leads in fundraising for the event. So I would love to be able to come out here with the CEO of the county and my general manager, to be able to present that to you. I do realize that we are very blessed in Ventura County to have so many great leaders throughout our communities, and I just really would love to see you join us. And I'm available for any questions, and again, thank you so much for your time and your consideration. I, based on what I've heard today, it sounds like you've got a lot of great causes and a lot of great leaders here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Alice Biding, and Jeffrey Shaner is after.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Alice Biding. I live in Santa Susana Mobile Home Park. My friend Teresa read to me the report about what's going on. First thing, I would like to know, did you amend or rescind or revoke the resolution 9352? Has it changed? Because I believe there were two separate resolutions. And I know about this because my husband, Tim Biding, was the president of the HOA in Santa Susana Park. But unfortunately, he passed away over six years ago. I don't know if you, a lot of people know about it. But there's a lot of things going on in all the parks, they don't know what the law is that govern the city or the California law. Mobile homes are in special class for low income, and that's, that's what happened. In my park, I just met a man, a single man with a child, and he's paying $1,050 a month just for that space. But he was locked into a three-year lease. Is that part of the resolution? Or was it just made up? I need to know the facts, what you guys have been up to since my husband died. My husband was the president of the HOA in 1994, and he went against Mark Williams of the park, which I have to deal with him now. And it's constant problems in the park, and nobody is doing anything about it, the state, the city, no one, okay? Because it's deemed a private property, so nothing can be done. So I would like to know answers from you. I don't know which one of you knows anything about mobile parks, or the law, the California law that governs all the mobile parks. How come I'm the only one? As far as I know, no one else has showed up or been informed in all the parks. There's thousands of people that live in mobile homes, and nothing, they're not informed. I wasn't informed, I've never informed, I have to talk to people to get an answer. But like, all right. There's nothing out there for blind people. I'm legally blind forever, legally blind, but I can see and do things other people cannot do, or don't want to do. But I'm doing what I'm good at.
Thank you, Alice, your time is up, and if I could have maybe Samantha get her information so we can communicate with her, the rent control ordinance information?
Who's going to do that?
I'm sorry?
Who's going to do that?
They're going to come up to you in just one second.
When?
Like, right now.
Okay.
Mayor? Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for having me here today. My name is Jeffrey Shaner, I am in support of the Simi Valley Free Clinic, I am a patient at the Simi Valley Free Clinic. I live in Simi Valley, have lived in Simi Valley since 1994, currently still do. In October of last year, I was diagnosed with diabetes. Through the strong and knowledgeable counsel of the men and women at the Free Counsel, a Free Clinic, rather, excuse me, I have successfully lowered my diabetic count, diabetic blood sugar, and everything related. On October 22nd of last year, I, my A1C was 9.5, which was out of control. I have, through their counsel, brought my A1C to 5.2, which is below normal to my limited knowledge. So I am in support of the Free Clinic as a patient and as a citizen of Simi Valley. I feel it is a fantastic place to go, and it's also a wonderful place for people like me who do not have a large income, to be able to have very, very high, top-notch medical care. My father passed away in 2015, in many of diabetic complications, including kidney failure and also various diabetic ailments. He is my motivation to become healthy, and with the help of the Simi Valley Free Clinic and their knowledgeable staff and team, I will continue this plan, and I will continue to have my personal health improved and guided successfully because of their knowledge and help. I understand that there is a possibility, that there is an amount of money that can be given, which I totally support, and perhaps even a new building. Well, I'm not on the team, but if I was, I would give my stamp of approval. So thank you for that, and I shall continue to be a patient of the Simi Valley Free Clinic and a resident of Simi Valley, and I thank you for your time and your consideration in this matter. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next speaker we have tonight is Kate Jones, then Ken Levine, and Betty Eskey.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, for this honor to speak in front of you. Usually I'm one-on-one with a client, so it's great to be able to speak to a bunch of people at once. My name is Kate Jones, and I am a professional clinical counselor associate at the Free Clinic of Simi Valley. I have been there two and a half years, I'm working towards my 3,000 hours, towards licensure, and I hope to have those hours accrued by the end of this year. It'll be a bittersweet time, it'll be great to be able to move out and be licensed, but it will be a sad, sad time leaving the Free Clinic. Yeah, this is emotional. The dynamics at the Free Clinic of Simi Valley are enormous, helpful, our supervision for counseling is second to absolutely none. Because of our great supervision and the vision of those supervisors, we're able to provide services for a myriad of clients, from the elderly with perhaps fears of death, to perhaps college kids with career-related issues, down to our little, little kids who are suffering from child abuse in one form or another. At the Free Clinic, because of our trained and educated supervisors, we're able to provide play therapy, which is an evidence-based modality created, oh gosh, 1980s, 19, yeah, before that, 50s. Play therapy is an extra special, extra special way for kids to work out their difficulties. A playroom is specifically designed and uniquely furnished with toys, artwork, a bop bag, so that they can work out their difficulties. At the Free Clinic, we have four rooms, not enough room for our eight clinicians. So I heartily, heartily support, please consider this gift of money to the Free Clinic, so that we can go on and help more and even more and even more clients. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers and community. I'm here as Boy Scout, Ken Levine, the Boy Scout Leader of Troop 676, representing our troop. Troop, can you please that? Look at those fine young men. This is our future of our community. By the way, Mayor, I appreciate when he came and spoke to our troop, he did a really good job. Not what I was expecting, but it was better, so very good, thank you. And the previous mayor had, came to my daughter's Brownie event, and that means a lot to the community, the show of support. As I've said, these are the future of our community, and it's quite a worthwhile endeavor. But we try to do service projects, there's so many hours for people that are not familiar with the Boy Scouts, to get your Eagle, which is the highest rank, you have to provide so many hours of service and community projects. And I try to do at least one project a month, and I called City Hall, or the city, to say, what kind of projects could we do, or do we need a permit to go pick trash out of the wash basin? And I kept getting transferred around, finally, after being on hold and so much, nobody gave me an answer, I just kind of hung up and did my own thing. I was thinking it'd be nice if you guys could put, like, have a place where we could get projects, that if the community has projects or things that need to be done, they could be accessed by the Boy Scouts. And even if there's bigger projects that you'd like done for Eagle Scouts, that there could be, I don't know, on your portal, on your website, or somehow that could be accessed, that the community knows how they can be involved and to further help us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, good to see all of you, and I appreciate the opportunity to come. Good evening to all the nonprofits, all the citizens that are here tonight. You make us who we are as nonprofits. I'm Betty Eskey, I'm the director at the Samaritan Center in Simi, and I, when Mike brought up the subject of the grant, I really appreciated the honesty and the...
and the forwardness in which you did that. We were not aware of a lot of the, the background of that. So, when I thought about it as the director of the Samaritan Center, I knew that would take some money from my budget that we've budgeted, but we are a community of nonprofits, and what we do most of all is we stand together. I remember five years ago when the Samaritan Center was ready to close our doors, we had $3,000 in the bank, and all that we had to do was reach out to the public and reach out to the nonprofits, and within nine days, we had $120,000 that was given by this community at large. And I can't think of a better organization than, that deserves this money than the Free Clinic, because they are reaching so many. They reach, of course, a lot of our clients, as well as the community at large. So I just wanted to come and say, I fully support this decision, as long as it's within the boundaries of what we're supposed to be doing. It should be until, I wish it could be until they would get the, the full budget that they need, but I know that there's other avenues that are coming. But just giving my support, Fred, and thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you, Betty.
Our next speaker tonight is Mary Lou Florian, and then there'll be, the next speaker after is Michelle Neff Hernandez.
Good evening. 5G is being propagated as the wave of the future, but this new innovation comes at a price. The price is severe human sickness. This will be one of the greatest threats to humanity in our own backyard. 5G will bombard us with really high frequencies, creating a denser soup of electromagnetic smog that is far greater than anything we have ever experienced. FCC has standards 100 times higher than what the human body can tolerate. This is what triggers disease and cancer. We don't even want the FCC to establish standards like this. As far as children, there's no safety level of microwave radiation for children. The brain of a child absorbs two times the amount of an adult. In studies, even a small amount of electromagnetic frequencies breaks the brain, blood barrier. We don't want these small cell towers in public right-of-ways very close to where people live and play. There's proof that the symptoms are reduced the further away. Distance is our friend. There is an environmentally safer, radiation-free, and less expensive alternative: fiber optics. This is more consumer-friendly and more energy-efficient, and can generate much-needed revenue. That's why hundreds of informed communities are saying no to 4G, 5G, and yes to municipal fiber optics. That is directly connected to homes and businesses. Small 4G, 5G cells are a cancer in our neighborhoods, and will grow in numbers and in power year after year, unless we adopt a protective ordinance to keep Simi Valley safe. Allow small cells only in commercial and industrial areas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, City Council members, and also community members. My name's Michelle Neff Hernandez. I'm the founder and executive director of Soaring Spirits International. We're a nonprofit that's been serving here in Simi Valley for the past 10 years, providing support for widowed men and women. We've been gratefully acknowledged by this council several times over the years. I appreciate so much your support. I'm also a proud member and past president of the Rotary Club of Simi Valley. I'm here tonight to speak to you on behalf of the Free Clinic's effort to support the community projects, grants, funding be allocated to the Free Clinic Multi-Services Central Project over the next three years. I don't need to convince you, I'm sure, of the value of the services of the Free Clinic. Other people have done that before me, and better than I personally could, since they're more familiar with the details. What I would like to draw your attention to, however, is the multi-services aspect of this particular project. After serving people in crisis for 10 years, I've come to realize that rarely are they in need of just one service. Many times, they come unaware of the other services that are available to them, and unaware of other needs that could be met. Sometimes it would require a further phone call, sometimes it would require going to another organization, sometimes it will just require navigating to another space, which may seem easy to us, but when you're in crisis, these things can be challenging. To be able to provide a multitude of services under, in one space, through this multi-services project, would give everybody an opportunity to walk through those doors and be supported to the best of the ability of not just one, but up to 14 different organizations, working for the betterment of our community and for people who are in crisis. So while I understand that allocating funding over three years, and a significant amount of funding over three years for what may seem like one project, may give you pause, I hope that what you see here is the opportunity to serve our community over many years, not through just the great efforts of the Free Clinic of Simi Valley, but through their ability to network with the many other organizations in Simi Valley, and the many organizations already ready to step in and provide services through this multi-services project. Your support of this project will help them finalize what I know a city council years before you here has begun, a project that we have, as a community, supported year after year, and we all look forward to a successful conclusion. Your support of providing this funding over the next three years was vital to the success of that process. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jonathan Kurahara, then it's Dan Jaeger, and June Ewer.
So, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Jonathan Kurahara. I'm a family practice doctor here in Simi Valley. I've been here 32 years, all of my medical career, and I've also been the medical director of the Free Clinic, volunteering for the past 32 years as well. If I, but I would tell you, one of the most rewarding aspects of my career here in Simi Valley is volunteering at the Free Clinic. And you've heard of what, what the Free Clinic gives to those in need, but I would tell you that the Free Clinic is also a great teaching institution. We have medical students, we have residents, we have college students, high school students, and I would like to say, I have volunteer Melissa Gonzalez, who's been coming here since elementary school. What better way to introduce people to medicine, where you remove all the insurance, all the bills, the worries, and you're just down to one person taking care of another? And that's the essence of the Free Clinic, and that's why I go there for 32 years, and I'll, I'll keep going there until, until I'm not able to do this. And so I would ask the, the leaders of the community to consider their grant for this Free Clinic of Simi Valley. I, I think you'll find it a worthwhile investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Dan Jaeger with the YMCA, and I'm here to support the Free Clinic and the funding for their project. Nobody else does the work that the Free Clinic is doing. And at the YMCA, we try to keep people away from the Free Clinic, but unfortunately, we don't have the ability to touch everybody and take care of everything, and the work that they do is so necessary in our community. In the past, the YMCA has received funding from this source, and we're very, very appreciative of it, but we will get by three years or more, and Simi Valley needs to see this capital project be successful. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, members of the City Council, nonprofit presenters, and members of our community. I am June Ewer. I'm here tonight as the community coordinator for the Community Coalition United CCU, a network of governmental agencies, nonprofits, church-based organizations, and a community who meets six times a year. Our annual report has been submitted to the City Council on or before November 17th. These face-to-face meetings, where members update, introduce, modify, and share the latest programs, resources, fundings, and the successes which make our community strong. I mention face-to-face as most of us are overwhelmed with the content we receive online. The impact of face-to-face cannot be dismissed. Jed, an adult male with extreme anxiety, distrustful of strangers, and increased family and social tension, had been escalating for months. His family and professional life were in caucuses. Issues with the police and social services became a common part of his life, increasing the stressors to the point of multiple suicide threats and attempts. His family would not call for help due to Jed's paranoia and distress. Finally, after working with Jed and his family for months, and a dedic- as a dedicated mental health firstator, encouraged Jed to attend a CCU meeting, to hear what resources might be available to help him. Jed met several people from various agencies. The face-to-face compassion, concern, and hope offered by CCU members convinced Jed to begin rebuilding his life by accepting services. Imagine all the professional distractions, imagine all the personal distractions that could have been avoided if such a meeting had happened months ago. At the CCU meetings, we discover which churches are currently participating and providing shelter or meals to people in need, who has an open or closed drug rehabilitation program, which new programs show promise and are willing to take referrals, and what are the most, what most of us are seeing in the current trends that we need to do to prepare for and help people. It is one meeting where you can walk away with information that can be used immediately, like Jed found out. Our next CCU meeting is coming up this Wednesday, March 13th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Simi Valley Library. I again ask and invite the City Council and the Simi Valley Police Department to designate a member of staff to attend the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, June.
All right, the last two speakers this evening is Bruce Boyer and Tracy Young.
Howdy, I'm Bruce Boyer from Chatsworth Lake Manor. So, we're back in federal court. We have an amended brief to bring everybody up to speed, what the lawsuit is about, that I've tried for, what, three years to at least have a conversation? No, you guys don't want to talk, you just want to pound on me. So, what we're talking about is our First Amendment. That means my right to fly my American flag on my trailer, which you made illegal. And then you exempted yourselves. You passed legislation and violated the vehicle code that said you're allowed to operate trailers with signs on them, but I'm not. None of these people are. That's called discrimination on the first order, and it's called codified. Now, if Bob Hewer wants to advertise his steer manure on a trailer, that's his First Amendment right. So, I brought some documents in case the city attorney isn't keeping you up to speed. First, California Vehicle Code, Section 21, this is called your supremacy clause. This means that a city or county cannot enact any ordinance that is not authorized by the California Vehicle Code. Next, we have an 18-page Attorney General's opinion that says the vehicle code supremacy clause is the supremacy clause, according to former Attorney General Vandykamp. So, no offense, Mr. Levitt or Mr. Eldridge, I think he's got it down better than you do, which means your ordinances that prohibit the parking of unhitched trailers have no vehicle code authority. In case you thought there was, in 2004, the City of Los Angeles sponsored legislation to make the parking of an unhitched trailer illegal. That was mine. How did it go? Didn't pass in the legislature. You have no legal authority. Attorney General Vandykamp explains how you have no legal authority to prohibit the parking of RVs on city streets. Oh, wait, another one you broke in the law for. All of these people are going to be wanting big bucks and damages, because when they're paying $1,000, $2,000 a year to put their vehicle in a storage lot, that they can't park in front of their own house without getting a ticket, we're talking major refunds. And yes, it is going to go to class action status. Next, you wrote me 58 parking tickets. Thanks, guys. Of course, did I break the law? Yes, in your opinion, but I didn't break the vehicle code. So I requested a review at a hearing, in compliance with the vehicle code. Well, Simi Valley doesn't follow the law either. You didn't give me reviews, because you don't give anyone reviews, and you don't give anyone a hearing on a parking ticket. Class action, you're going to pay for it. And lastly, Sergeant Duggan says I can't park my vehicle, or they'll tow it, and they did. Bruce can't park. Well, here it is. This is why you're getting sued. You explain to them how many millions of dollars they're paying for.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer.
Thank you.
My name is Dr., sorry. My name is Dr. Tracy Young, and I'm a local girl, born and raised here in the area, and now the Simi Valley Free Clinic is my home. I've worked at this clinic as a medical student, as a resident, as the supervising physician, and I currently serve on the Board of Directors. And we at the Free Clinic of Simi Valley treat thousands of people, and we're asking for help. As you have heard, we treat the wonderful mom who's doing her best, working three part-time jobs that just can't make her insurance payments this month. We treat the gentleman whose teeth are rotting out of his head, and we're part of the therapy team who helped after the fires and the shooting. But what I want you to know is, we actually do more than that. High school students, college students, nursing students, medical students, pharmacy students, and student therapists, they all train under our staff at the clinic, and we hope to have a place to do this properly. Currently, this takes place in the hallway between patient rooms. We don't even have enough chairs for everyone to sit at the same time, so we could really use your help with fixing that. We all do this, and we make do with the situation because we believe in the Free Clinic, and we have a passion for what we do, but we could be doing so much better for our patients. We try to do our teaching in this hallway as quietly as possible, but discussing possible diagnoses and treatments, and pros and cons of each option, it's not great for patient care. Please help us to help our patients, to help our trained staff, and to help serve our community better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and City Council members, the next item on the agenda is 2B, City Council comments.
Are there any comments? Mayor Protim Kavanaugh.
I just wanted to let the Boy Scout troop leader know, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. I used to sit on the park board district.
Ken Levine.
Okay, Ken Levine, thank you, I'm sorry about that. If you want to check with Rancho Simi Recreation and Park District, they usually keep a list of Eagle Scout projects. Jeannie List is the volunteer coordinator, I believe, so you can help her, and then I think we're going to look at it, too. So thank you for coming forward.
I did, I did want to acknowledge, I was keeping tabs, and I know that there were at least seven people that spoke in, in support of the Free Clinic, and I wanted to thank you for your comments, and we were listening, and I wanted to thank the representatives from other nonprofits who were willing to sacrifice themselves financially to, for the betterment of the community. I just wanted to acknowledge that, that that was showing a great teamwork and a great camaraderie. I just wanted to acknowledge that that was showing a great teamwork and a great camaraderie to work together on a greater good. And of course, we'll be discussing what we want to do, but I just wanted to commend those of you who came forward. Also wanted to say something, too. I wanted, in fact, when I saw those good-looking scouts walking in, I was going to acknowledge you until your troop leader, or scout leader came forward, and I wanted to acknowledge you for showing up even in uniform, because I know that that is, that's double effort when you guys do that. So, thank you, thank you for doing that tonight, and I, my heart is with the scouting program, and so I just wanted to say thank you for being here.
I, too, would like to acknowledge Troop 676, and I just got back from a scout outing with my troop, 689, my son's troop, and my daughter's at a Troop 633 meeting right now, so I am up to here with, and I am a mayor badge counselor, just so you know. Just so you know, boys, and an elected official for the citizenship mayor badge. The other thing that I would suggest for Eagle Scout projects is we have this wonderful group of nonprofit organizations in the room that I know are always looking. And when I saw you guys walk through the door, and I saw all these nonprofit directors and volunteers here, I said, wow, what a wonderful fit. And that's something that my, the Boy Scouts that I have worked with have reached out to, the Samaritan Center, the Free Clinic, and all the wonderful nonprofit organizations. They're always looking for help, they're always looking for support. They're wonderful places for our Boy Scouts and our Girl Scouts to volunteer and to do Eagle Scout projects. So, I highly recommend you connect with all the wonderful leaders of our nonprofits here in Simi Valley and reach out to them, because I know they're always looking for support as well. And to the nonprofits as well, I would like to say, you know, this is what community is. This is what makes Simi Valley, Simi Valley. The fact that you're willing to come here on a Monday night and say, we're willing, again, like Elaine said, like Councilwoman Lister said, to sacrifice yourselves financially and say, we're willing to take the hit so that we can provide a service through the Free Clinic that we know will benefit the entire community. And that's what Simi Valley is about. That's what makes Simi Valley so special, that's what makes us so wonderful, is the ability for us to come together, Boy Scouts helping nonprofits, nonprofits helping each other, and us seeing each other as residents and as families and in need of help and support. So, thank you for all of you who came out this evening to support the Free Clinic. I really, really, it makes me so proud to be a resident of Simi Valley.
I had the pleasure of beating these fine young scouts at their church, and you make your scout leader look really good. You guys are great. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, the next item on the agenda is Item 31, Interview and Appointment of John Tolson as Planning Commissioner, and Stratus Peros is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and Council members. Planning Commissioners serve a term on the commission concurrent with the nominating Councilmember's term on the City Council. There is currently one vacant seat on the Planning Commission, that belonging to Council Member Lister. Councilmember Lister has chosen to nominate John Tolson to be appointed to the Planning Commission. Mr. Tolson has been a longtime resident of Simi Valley and attended Royal High School. Mr. Tolson is currently employed as an insurance agent, and he previously owned and operated his own business for 18 years. Mr. Tolson is currently serving as the Director of Membership and Marketing for the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce, and Mr. Tolson has been heavily involved with numerous nonprofit groups. He is currently Treasurer and Board Member with Soaring Spirits International, Director of Public Affairs with the LDS Church Simi Valley Stake, and Treasurer with the Rotary Club Simi Valley Cajun and Blues Festival. If approved by the Council and appointed by the mayor, it is recommended that the appointment of John Tolson to the Planning Commission become effective immediately. The next scheduled Planning Commission meeting is on March 13th, 2019. This concludes staff's presentation, and the Council is welcome to interview Mr. Tolson if desired.
Well, I think we ought to ask Mr. Tolson to come down. So, we've got our questions already, right? Yeah, three pages of them. So, first person that would like to, Elaine, how?
Well, actually, I don't know.
Maybe you should introduce.
Yeah, I don't know that I have any questions for him because he is my nominee. I will, I will say that I am impressed with all that Mr. John Tolson has done for the community and what I know he'd be a wonderful representative on that Planning Commission. I will tell you one little bit anecdotally, and then I'll let you ask the questions. As you know, I was here in chambers a month ago, being interviewed, as was many others, for this position to fill this vacancy, and Mr. Tolson came right after me, and I had the privilege of listening to everyone else who was interviewed afterwards. And one of the things that struck me in his conversation was that he was concerned about some of the land use, particularly in some of our area that is zoned, not commercial but industrial. And he was concerned about it not truly being used for industrial purposes, for generating jobs, et cetera. And I just, it just was a little bit of a jingle, thinking this man cares about our zoning and about good planning and about good community building, and so that was just one of many reasons why. But the question is, how, what kind of a Planning Commissioner would you be?
Very good.
I'm done with my questioning, go for it.
After that, do you need to break after all those questions? Councilmember Louvenus.
My question for you is, you know, I am a bit concerned about you being the Director of Marketing and Membership for the Chamber of Commerce, so my question is, would you be willing to, you know, recuse yourself where there would be a potential conflict of interest regarding Chamber of Commerce issues and planning? For example, if there's a member that you're recruiting of a business that is going before the Planning Commission, would you be willing to recuse yourself?
100%, definitely. If you don't let me hear.
Okay. Councilmember Judge.
No, I have no questions. I know John, I know he'll do an outstanding job.
That's saying a bunch coming from Mr. Judge.
Thanks, Mike.
Mayor Protim.
I have a question. Are you going to have time to do this with everything else you do?
I'm going to make time.
I know you will. I'm also very familiar with Mr. Tolson, and I admire everything you do and your dedication, so I think you'll make a great Planning Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
I, too, am familiar with John and have worked side-by-side with him on, out talking to members of the chamber, talking to local business owners, and it's always been a pleasure and a positive experience. And I don't think I have any questions for you. I think it's, are you, when's the first meeting?
Two days.
Yeah. Have you read your agenda?
I have.
You have? Okay.
He's already been talking about the quantity of reading involved.
It's amazing what staff puts together in such a short time, but at any rate, I'm ready for a motion.
I move that the Council appoint John Tolson on the Planning Commission.
I'll second it.
Call for the vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
And now, at the direction of the Council, I officially appoint you to the Planning Commission.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, wait, don't go away.
Oh.
There's more. It says volunteer, and I know you think you're making big bucks. When you get through your first agenda, you're going to go on to volunteer. Elaine, let's go.
Mr. Mayor and City, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, the next item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar. There's one resolution for consideration tonight as follows. Consent Item 6, Resolution Number 2019-10, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley rescinding Resolution Number 2006-01, and adopting proposed revisions to the Simi Valley Council on Aging Bylaws.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move Consent Items 1 through 6.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Actually, I wanted to pull something from the consent calendar.
Okay.
Then I'll withdraw my motion.
Motion withdrawn. Okay, which one do you want to pull?
Actually, I had a question about the first one.
So, you want to pull one?
I'd like to pull one just for a quick discussion.
Okay, and Councilmember Louvenus?
I would like to pull 3.
Okay, let's handle those first. So, your question on Consent 1.
The question on Consent 1 is that that is for approval of minutes that were taken for June 4th, 2018, and two of us on this council currently were not in office at that time, and I don't believe as such that we should be voting on minutes that we were not present for. I think probably I, that we would need to abstain. I may be in error there.
Yeah, I was going to abstain from voting on 1.
But since they're all together, I think it has to be voted for separately. That was.
Actually, I think according to California and the rules, the rules of order that we follow, you can vote on the agenda items on past minutes, as long as you've read the minutes.
It is true legally you could do it, but if an abstention would be a more comfortable position, then that could also be done.
Yeah, or you can abstain.
I would prefer to abstain. I did read the minutes.
I read them as well, and carefully, but yeah.
So, there's three of us that can vote on 1. Let's do that vote separately right now. Does it hear motion?
I move Consent Item 1 for approval.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Louvenus and Councilmember Lister abstaining.
Okay. Question on 3.
Sorry, I'm gathering my notes here. I just wanted to make a comment, not that I wasn't going to approve the report, but, you know, just to point out our numbers on our re-allocation, that of the, you know, 310 units that were allocated to have on target by 2021, we only have 37 for very low income, and of the 208 units for low income that were allocated, we only have 3. And of the moderate income units for the re-allocation, again, for the target of 2021, our total completion is only 74, so I just wanted to point out that we are, you know, behind on our target. That's not to say that we can't catch up. You know, a couple developments, and we could catch up very quickly, but I just wanted to point that out and make, make us aware of that.
Okay. Okay, what?
And I'd like to ask on 5, if, I'm sorry to take it out of order if that were.
Okay, now, we want to pull 5?
Just a couple quick questions, please.
Okay, let's vote on 3. Is motion for 3?
Move to approve Consent Item 3.
Second.
Call for the vote. Okay. Councilmember Lister.
Motion passes unanimously.
I'm sorry.
So, 5, I just had some quick questions, and this might be for Mr. Fujiwaki, possibly. I'm sorry to pull you up, but thank you, just some quick questions. I thought it was excellent, this whole project to, for energy efficiency, I thought it looked excellent. I just had some questions, though, about, is it possible that we get started and the rebate is withdrawn? I understand that basically when you make the application, they're guaranteed that this rebate is in existence, and it's based upon that. Is it possible that, I mean, do we start the project, do we get the funds first, I guess, then we're able to do the project, or can you, is it possible the project, the funds, rebate funds get withdrawn as the project is being?
Typically, rebate funds are done after the completion of the project.
Do we, are we guaranteed of their payment?
I believe, I'm not exactly sure, but I believe once the application is made, that the SCE will make a commitment at that time before we move forward.
Gotcha. And I understand it takes three years, well, if the project's not completed within three years, then we would not be eligible for those rebates.
It'll be completed in three years.
Okay, that was, okay. Thank you, I just wanted to understand how that rebate, appreciate it.
Sure. Okay, need a motion for consent, 2, 4, 5, and 6?
If there's no more that want to be pulled, I'll move that we accept 2, 4, 5, and 6.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, is 7A. It's a second reading of Ordinance Number 1295, approving an amendment to the Development Agreement DA-04-01, AMD Number 03, to extend the term for three years and reuse of the Certified Final Environmental Impact Report, and addendum for the Runcle Canyon Woodlands Project located at the South Terminus of Sequoia and Talbert Avenues. And the ordinance tonight reads as follows. Second reading, Ordinance Number 1295, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley approving an amendment to the Development Agreement DA-04-01, Amendment Number 3, to extend the term for three years and reuse of the Certified Final Environmental Impact Report, and addendum for the Runcle Canyon Woodlands Project located at the South Terminus of Sequoia and Talbert Avenues. There is not a staff report for this item.
Any discussion? Motion?
I move adoption of Ordinance Number 1295.
A second.
Call for the vote.
Motion passes unanimously. The next item, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, is Agenda Item 8A, Discussion and Possible Direction Regarding the Disbursement of Community Projects Grant Funds, and Mara Maltz is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the City Council. The MOU between the City and Waste Management provides $150,000 for community projects and programs to be dispersed at the direction of the City Council. Currently, the Council has directed that a competitive process be used to solicit funding requests, and a committee provide recommendations to the City Council to consider prior to final award amounts being decided. The fiscal year 2019-20 funding cycle process was actively underway when the City Council requested a discussion on the disbursement options for the community project grant funds. A total of 22 funding requests were received totaling approximately $523,000 in requests. The competitive process has been put on hold in response to Council's request for this item this evening. The fiscal year 2019-20 award cycle received one request for the maximum amount permissible from the Free Clinic, as we've already heard here tonight, and additionally, that request requested consideration for future years' awards as well, totaling $450,000 across three fiscal years. The City Council has several options for disbursement of the CPG funds for this current active award cycle as well as subsequent award cycles. The options available are as follows. One, the Council could award all available fiscal year 1920 CPG funds to the Free Clinic. Two, the Council could award... Two, the Council could award part of the $150,000 allocated for the fiscal year 1920 to the Free Clinic and resume the competitive process to award the remaining funds to those who previously applied during the solicitation process. Three, resume the competitive process for the fiscal year 1920 CPG funds. Four, award future CPG funds to the Free Clinic for a specified number of award cycles. Five, continue to utilize the competitive process for the future year award cycles as well. Staff requests direction on how the City Council would like to proceed with the dispersment of the fiscal year 2019-20 and future year CPG funds.
Questions of staff?
I have questions of, is there going to be a presentation made by, regarding the reason for this request at all or beyond what we've received in our...
Wait, say that again, please.
Is there going to be a presentation made by Free Clinic versus, I just have some questions with Free Clinic about the usage of the funds and the need for the funds, well, I understand the need for the funds, but just some questions about...
Yeah, I think if you hang on just a minute, and we'll see if there's any other questions of staff, and then we'll ask Free Clinic to come down.
Okay, thank you, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, great, any questions of staff?
I have a question for staff. Has this ever, I was looking in the past at how funds were allocated and how there were fewer applicants and larger funding requests, so has there ever been a time where they requested funds in advance, like right now they're requesting for the next three fiscal years, and has the city done that? And if we don't award it for the next three fiscal years, can we just do it on a year-by-year basis?
So there's never been any request that has been granted for future award cycles. There have been nonprofits over the course of the history of the competitive process who have indicated that they like Simi multi-year. However, with the high demand, I think that the nonprofits, when they've gone through the competitive process, have, that nature of request has kind of faded off. However, that being said, there was a fiscal year in 1415, I believe it was, that the Samaritan Center came forward with an emergent need off-cycle from the competitive process that was being discussed by the Council at the time. So under the abilities of the Council, whatever direction the Council wants to go in, we can accommodate that from a staff level. So should there be a need to disperse, to award funds in a future year, we can hold dispersment based upon the fiscal year budget cycle. Currently, the funds for the program are dispersed in advance, and then the revenues come in on a monthly basis from Waste Management to backfill that cash flow.
And I think Mara is talking about since we started doing the competitive process, but prior to that, for the first two years, we did split the money, $75,000 apiece for two agencies, one being the Free Clinic, and that was designated by the City Council without a competitive process. You have a lot of freedom and discretion as a City Council, how you want to do it. The first two years were set like that, and then starting year three is when we initiated the competitive grant process.
My other question is, are these, you know, depending on how much is awarded, is this matching another grant? Is this, are they looking for funding from us because they're going to get a match from another funding source? So if we, if they get $50,000 from us, will someone else match $50,000 or why the request for, I know it's the maximum amount, but is there competitive funding from another source? That's my question.
So the information submitted formally to the city was included in the Council agenda packet attached to the staff report with the detailed scope of work. That information wasn't detailed in there, but I would defer to the Free Clinic to respond to those questions in detail.
And I do have one question for staff, if that's all right. I recognize there were 22 applicants that started the process, that attended the workshop, that started the process, and have already applied. Of those 22 applicants, have, what was the process been? Have you notified them that we are considering this and that their application's on hold? Are you, or that they should, I mean, what has the notification and the communication been with those other applicants?
So staff did send out a link to the staff report and the City Council agenda last week when that was, information was made public. Since Council didn't give formal direction for us to place the process on hold, we administratively did that just because we'd be currently soliciting members for our committee, so in order to not create more confusion pending the outcome of tonight's discussion. So the information was provided, but there was an additional narrative provided in the notification. It simply was that the Council requested, and an item discussing dispersment options for the CPG funds would be discussed tonight, and the staff report link was provided to all the nonprofits. Of those nonprofits, only one nonprofit responded to my email, just simply asking if it was mandatory meeting for them or not, but didn't express any concern one way or the other, whether or not they read the contents of the report, I'm unclear on, but there wasn't any concern expressed from any of those 22 agencies that received my email last week.
Okay. Thank you. I have another question of staff.
Okay.
My other question was, I know the space that they're asking to be allocated for the new site would be for up to 14 additional nonprofit organizations, so if we gave the funding, whatever funding that we gave, who would have purview over what 14 additional nonprofit organizations would be on-site? Is that something that's within our purview or within the Free Clinic's purview, or who makes that decision?
So currently, that has been a private party negotiation with the Free Clinic, working with the various nonprofits throughout our community. However, we have the ability to set contract terms, and we could additionally authorize City Manager's staff to negotiate such terms of the contract, should that be a direction the Council wants to pursue.
Thank you.
Okay, could we have a representative of the Free Clinic? Rather than say a representative, I should say the representative. Hold both of them.
For the record, I'm Fred Bauermeister, Executive Director of the Free Clinic of Simi Valley. Maggie Kestley, our Board President. To answer your question, this has been a long process. I would say started in 2009, when the Simi Valley Community Foundation was awarded some grant funds through the city that staff mentioned, that Mara mentioned, to start a facility in Simi Valley that could house a number of nonprofits. We were approached by the Simi Valley Community Foundation to be a tenant, anchor tenant in that facility, and we undertook a capital campaign to raise the money to build out the facility. The facility is now just across the way, occupied by Kaiser ironically, who's a great partner of ours. Unfortunately, the funds that were being handled by the Community Foundation were mishandled, and that project concluded. The clinic, as many of you know, lost a lot of money. We lent a number of resources to the...
I'm going to go ahead and raise this.
Oh, the volume? Or this taller?
There you go.
You going to lower it for Maggie? Where's the switch? Sorry, thank you. Anyway, so the clinic lost a lot of money, as some of you know, and when that became public, Supervisor Peter Foy and his Chief of Staff Brian Miller approached the clinic and said, "We recognize that what you're trying to do is a good thing for the community, and we recognize that the clinic was a victim in the process." So the county approached the clinic and offered us a 14,000 square foot building located at 2003 Royal Avenue for $1 a year. It gets better. That building used to house public health, the County General Medical Clinic, and the County Behavioral Health, so all of the services that we provide would fit in that space, and there's plenty of room for other nonprofits to occupy the space with us. So our goal is to pick up the idea of the former project and make it happen at Royal Avenue. So to that end, we have partners like Kaiser Permanente, that's contributed $200,000 to this project, like Cal Wellness, that's contributed $75,000 to this project. We've been working diligently with a number of service clubs and individuals in the community and to make this happen. We need to raise about $1.5 million to outfit the building to accommodate our medical and dental program specifically. Those are complicated, expensive programs to put in. Luckily, some of the plumbing is still in that facility on Royal, so it's going to be cheaper than the one on Alamo would have been. So that's sort of the nutshell presentation, I guess, you're looking for. I don't know, Maggie, if you want to add anything?
I think so. I'd also like to present to you that Kaiser has stepped up in many different ways to offer assistance to us with architectural services, space planning, they're helping us get engineering. They've come out in a big way in support of us and this project to help take down the amount of money that it's going to cost in cash, and instead giving us some in-kind donations, which will be badly needed because the 1.5 may actually fall short of what our needs are.
So the money that we're requesting from the city would be added to that and get us closer to at least, get us closer to the million dollar goal. Right now, we have about $450,000 pledged to this project. In the audience is Alan and Antoinette Mann. I'm pointing you out because they've pledged $10,000 to this project, so we appreciate that, and that's just an example of some of the pledges that we have right now. So hopefully that answers your questions, and we're here to answer any others.
So I don't have to stumble through it? Would you just kind of give a brief overview of the services you provide?
Sure. Last March, March 1st, just a couple weeks ago, was our 48th anniversary year of providing medical services, marriage and family counseling, legal and dental services. When Mayor Mashburn referred to me as being the Free Clinic coming up here, sure, I represent 138 volunteer professionals like Dr. Kurahara and Dr. Young back there and Kate Jones, who are among those professional volunteers. We're unique in that particular category in that we have volunteers that are professionals, providing their service in their professional capacity, just like they would in their private offices. Only thing, they do it out of the generosity of their heart to help the community, like Dr. Kurahara said. We benefit and we get, I get the attention for what they do, and I am grateful to them. And so, we do that free of charge to anyone from anywhere, because our funding comes from all over the place. So it's a great asset, I think it's a great asset to the community. It's certainly something that I think the community can point to as a real symbol of the givingness and the caringness of Simi Valley, so thank you.
Any other questions?
I do, I just want to understand, in my reading, it said that you needed to raise 1.5 million by 2018, or you would lose that building. And now obviously we're in 2019, you're a third of the way there, is there jeopardy of losing that building?
We have, we have basically one year to raise the 1.5 million with a six-month extension. That was automatic. Then we have to ask for an additional year. We're in that process right now. So we have basically a year from July 1st of this year to complete the project. That's in the agreement we have with the county.
And they have put the stipulation on you that you have to raise those funds to show the support that it will be correctly renovated?
Right.
And if you don't reach, because obviously we don't have that kind of money to give you, if you are unable to reach that level, let's say you end up at 1.2 million in that timeframe, then what happens?
We actually have, we actually have 10 years to do the 1.5 million in total. But realistically, we can't move in until we build it out, so we have to raise the money, build it out, move in, and we'll meet the goal of the 1.5.
Can you do it in phases? Let's say you have $750,000, does that give you enough to at least get half the building renovated?
That's sort of something we would have to talk to the city about, because there's regulations as far as that goes.
I understand.
And there's, there's some technical part with the county, because even though, as I'm standing here before you, I have a key to that building, I can go there anytime, we don't have possession of the building. Once we take possession, then all the insurance kicks in and all that stuff. Right now, the county is covering the property.
And what will trigger that possession? What has to happen for you to actually have possession?
When we say, when we say we're ready, and so we're, if, let's say, in the next six months before the end of the year, we get the 1.5 million, which we expect to do, then we can tell the county that we're ready to go. We've got our architect Perkins Will, who's an international architectural firm that's volunteering to do the architectural work on this building. We tell the county that we have everything in place, we can start construction, they give us the next green light level to do construction, then we start building out the building, and it's all negotiated with the county, I think, wouldn't that be fair?
And also, my understanding is, and there is a process for this, based on our pledges, we can get a loan, a construction loan, to give us the cash we need to build it out while we're getting the pledges in, because not everybody is going to pledge and give us that cash right up front. Sometimes it's done over a three-to-five-year period of time, but that will provide us, once we have concrete pledges, I do believe we have the opportunity to go and get a loan for that.
Could you give us a overview of your current building and the rent/lease agreement?
In our current facility?
Yes, the one on Tappo Street.
Okay, we have two facilities right now. Our main location is on Tappo Street, 2060 Tappo Street, right by the car wash. Our landlord is Roger Callahan. We pay $1,275 a month rent for that, about 2,500 square foot, which is a very good deal. He's been a great landlord. We will be forever indebted to Roger Callahan for the fact that there is a Free Clinic in Simi Valley. The other, our other landlord is the Simi Valley Unified School District, and they have rented to us a 2,100 square foot facility on Deodora Street, which is where our dental clinic is located. There, we pay $1 a month, plus the utilities and stuff, but that's what we pay for rent for both of those facilities, so it's $1,276 a month.
And will both of those go into the new building?
We'll move everything, our plan is right now to move every, all of our programs into the site on Royal Avenue, yes. So we will be, once again, the anchor tenant. We'll occupy one half of the building, and the other half of the building will be as many as 14 other nonprofit organizations, and most of them you've already heard from, but Big Brothers Big Sisters is going to be in there, Many Mansions wants to be in there, Interface wants to have an office there. There's about seven we have left over from the previous project, but there are more in the wings.
Any other questions?
I don't know if this is a question for you or for staff, but you mentioned before there was, you know, funds that were mismanaged, and so I guess my concern is with this amount of money, because it's a lot of money. You know, how would you ensure that the funds are not mismanaged?
Well, there's a number of things. First of all, when this all went down, the clinic voluntarily conducted an audit, because we wanted to be able to show the community that we're, every penny that's given to the Free Clinic is completely accounted for, and we're gold rated by Guide Star, so that we're transparent. You can go to our website and download any of our 990 tax forms and see where all the money goes, first of all. Second of all, once we started the capital campaign, we set up entirely set, set up an entirely different account. So there's an account for the Multi Services Center with its own checkbooks, its own accounting system that's separate. So our board of directors, many of which are here tonight by the way, are overseeing that the money is separate. I personally don't get a penny from any money raised for the Multi Services Center. No one on our staff gets any money from the Multi Services Center. All that money goes to construction and fundraising costs to build, to raise the 1.5 million dollars. And it's all available to you. You can see it, anybody can see it.
And Fred, I don't know if Councilwoman Louvenus is aware, that money mismanagement was a different foundation. The Free Clinic was just going to be the tenant of the building that the other foundation was working on.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so I wanted to make sure you knew that, so.
Thank you.
Do you have a discussion or just...
Yeah, just wait, just wait for questions.
I have one more question.
Okay.
You had many nonprofits... Have you had many nonprofits who came here in support of you, in support of Free Clinic?
Yes.
Were there other nonprofits that were not able to come, that were in support of you?
Well, you've got copies of letters, five, I think, that were not able to be here tonight, that were in support, and then the ones that were here. There are, this is extremely sensitive to us, because anyone who knows me knows that I'm a huge advocate for the nonprofit sector. I serve on the California Lutheran University Center for Nonprofit Leadership Advisory Board, which is an organization within Cal-Lu that trains people on how to govern and manage nonprofit organizations. I presented to every single leadership Simi Valley class on Nonprofit Day and talked about the roles, relationships of board members and staff, the good work of nonprofits. So I'm an advocate. So for us, for me in particular, to come before the community facing other nonprofits and saying, "Sorry, this time, we need the money. We need to take the community to another level," is very difficult. And when Councilmember Judge told me last Friday morning at the Chamber of Networking Breakfast that today was the day, I panicked. And Betty Eskey was in the room, and I'd left the Networking Breakfast, and Betty was the first person that called me. And she said, "Fred, you have my support." Unsolicited. Meant the world to me, because there's no one more respected in the community than Betty Eskey. So that's where we're standing, and that's why we're here. It pains us to do it, but we really believe this is the greater good for the community.
Thank you.
Okay, council comments, starting with Elaine.
Thank you. Yeah, you probably sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. I appreciate the response to the questions. I think it's important, as we weigh this, it's important to understand that the funds will truly be used to its end, and that we will get this building. I should, I should tell you that I drove over there today because I wanted to see the building, and I walked around the parking lot, and I got down on my knees, because you could look through the window. There's an area that's not, if you're low enough, that's not one-sided, two-way glass. You can look through and see what it looks like on the inside. So I want you to know that I did that, because I wanted to see a little bit of what this building is that we were talking about. And I can see why this would be an ideal building for you, as far as the dimensions and the parking lot space and its accessibility to the Samaritan, and just the various other places that are around. It seems geographically positioned well. So I, I just want to give you that accolade, that I do think that it is, it is, really would be a good, good, a good, good thing for us in that spot in our community. Now, that being said, I'm a little uncomfortable that we have advertised an availability of grant funds, and in good faith, we have 22 nonprofits that attended the workshop that have, have given, have filled out applications and have desired to be considered for their needy projects. And there's, there's, obviously, there's over $500,000 in need that's been put before us. And so I'm a little concerned about saying to those people, "Just kidding. Thank you for your work, but we've, but your application is not going to be considered." If I were to make a recommendation, to be very honest, I would probably recommend that we consider $75,000 or $100,000 tonight and continue with the process with, with our committee that was going to observe, look at all the rest of the applications, and if they decided to come back with a recommendation, that we go ahead and give the balance, $50,000 or whatever, then, then we would know that all of those other nonprofits who desired funds at least had had their application considered. So that's what I would consider for this year. I know there's a discussion, would we do this in subsequent years, years two and three? I certainly think we're fine to change the rules for the next two years going out, and, and if we wanted, this body decided we wanted to commit to three years, I absolutely think this would be a real blessing for our community. So, those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
I think the needs of this country going forward show, in every research study, that the biggest costs that are impacting families is health care. Not just, you know, medical care, but mental health care and physical health care. And I think the need that the Free Clinic is filling is going to be a need that we're going to need more and more every year. The number one fundraiser on GoFundMe is for medical expenses. Over 70% of the GoFundMe fundraisers are for medical expenses. And I see many of our own residents here in Simi Valley asking for funds, doing fundraisers for medical expenses, for everything from cancer to surgeries. And so this is definitely a huge need. And as I look at what the, you know, parameters are of what we look at in terms of how we give funding, do we serve, are 50% of the individuals served by the organization? Are they Simi Valley residents? You know, does this benefit Simi Valley? Is there an ability to complete the project within the expenditure period? Are community needs being met? And all those things are things that the Free Clinic does, in every way, in every aspect. I had thought about what Councilwoman Littler stated as well. You know, would this be unfair to other nonprofits? And that's why I asked for the list of, you know, who, who supported, and I made copious notes of who was here and expressed their support. I would say, I would agree with Councilwoman Littler that, in all fairness, to award, you know, $100,000 to Free Clinic for this year and go through the competitive process and ask the other nonprofits who did apply, in all fairness, you know, would you be willing to, you know, give, you know, withdraw your application so that we could give this money to the Free Clinic? I think for this year, that would be fair. Because when I apply for grants, when other people apply for grants, I think there's this expectation that you're applying for this pot of money. And so I would hate for everyone else who has applied to not get any funding whatsoever. And I would like to offer that fairness as well, to say, okay, you know, $100,000 for the Free Clinic, and then for the following years, that we could offer, you know, the full amount and offer full disclosure for those applicants who have already applied, and then see how we disperse the rest of the $50,000. That's my feeling. I think that would be fair. Again, I think that meets the needs of our community. That gives a good chunk of the money that Free Clinic needs. And, you know, to see the competitive funding that you're getting from the county, the support from all the community members, I think that's fair. That's, those are my, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Councilman Judge?
I may have made a mistake in bringing this up when I did, because we had to wait for a couple of important things to happen in the city. First of all, there were districts, and then there was an election, and then there were other things. That's why it wasn't brought up until the time that I did. We're not that far along in the, in the process of getting applications for the community grants at this point. We haven't even picked a board to oversee it yet, have we?
No, we put the committee process on hold to facilitate this item.
So, we still have the CBGD grant thing, right?
CDBG, which is the Community Development Block Grant.
Stat government, stat government acronym. That is still going on, and that is still a competitive process for grants available to nonprofits in our city, right?
To nonprofits serving a select population, so not, it wouldn't be as broadly available as the community projects grant funds are.
The thing with the Free Clinic, like I pointed out, and everybody's already talked about it, when the council first got this money from Waste Management, which let me also verify, you know, make sure that I emphasize, this is not taxpayer money. This is not money from the federal government, which is taxpayer money. It comes from the federal government. This is money that was given to us as a gift by Waste Management, because the city did not block their expansion in 2010. So that being said, is, at the time, we were allocating a big portion of this money to go to the Free Clinic. At that point, it was under the community foundation, and those issues were made, you know, we talked about those earlier. And so that kind of locked up that stuff at that time. Since then, I've been to a presentation by the Free Clinic over at the new area on, on Royal. And it is, when you, when you go there, and it's tough to, and I wish the new councilmembers had had that opportunity that I had, to go there and get a tour and have them tell you what they're going to do there. It is going to be a home for almost most of the nonprofits that I know of in this town. This is where everybody's going to be able to go. This is going to be the one-stop shop for nonprofits in our city. This is going to be a place that's going to, you know, be the envy, I guarantee you the envy of every city in Ventura County, because I think we'll be the only city that has such a place where you can go and have such access to these nonprofits in one location. Not to mention having very good medical care, dental care, and legal advice, all in one building for free, given free. I mean, I can't overemphasize the importance of this in our city. The fact that the Free Clinic has been able to operate where it's been operating for a long period of time and doing the good that it has done is always amazing to me. And it's always amazing to me when I point that out to people that are not from Simi Valley. So that's why I would emphatically, you know, beg the council to go forward with this on the full amount of the money we get every year from Waste Management, at least for the next three years. And what I say by the next three years is because, in the next three years, we will have had a new council. And the one thing this council doesn't want to do is, is lock up other councils. So we want to make sure the next council that comes in three years will be able to do what they want to do with the money. And I also understand that the fact that, like Maggie said when she came up here about, if they have a guaranteed, this would be like a guaranteed revenue stream for them for at least three years. They can use that towards the ability to get loans for the building. And I've talked to other people that said that is a possibility. So, this would get this project done. And I would be fully supportive of going to the nonprofit that have applied so far and asking them straight out if they mind, you know, waiting for three years to do this again, and maybe applying for the other grants if they're available at this time. I have no problem doing that, but I would really like to see the full amount of this money go this year and for the next two, to the Free Clinic, so they can get off and running with this. I think, once this is done and once the city sees what it's going to be, I mean, there's going to be a lot of good this does, much more than probably, I guarantee, any city council's done for this city. So, that's what I'm, that's all I have to say.
Mayor Proton Kavina?
Yes, sir. I also wanted to bring up this CDBG grants. Part of that was, in looking at the names of the organizations that applied for the existing, not all of these are Simi Valley. So to me, I tend, I tend to give our Simi Valley nonprofits a little bit more priority. And I know the CDBGs are basically, they have to serve the citizens of Simi Valley. So I would tend to go with that. On that same thing, what I would ask is, is the Free Clinic willing to not apply for CDBG funds for the next three years to allow those to be accessed by others? Okay, good, thank you. That's what I was hoping you'd say. Also, I did want to thank Waste Management, Lisa Hammond-Ways here from Waste Management, so thank you for allowing us to have this money to divide up. I would also, we could say to the ones that have started the process here, maybe we give them a slight priority for the next CDBG funding round. I don't know how we can do that, but maybe mention that to the committee that will eventually be working on that. We did have, to me, that all the big nonprofits in town basically are backing this. You know, Betty at the Samaritan Center, and I am sore from pulling weeds Saturday, thank you. And, and I was checking off who you had here. You had the Y and the, well, yourselves, the Free Clinic, and you had letters from Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Interface. Those are our priority, larger nonprofits that would, if they're backing it, that really puts a lot more emphasis on it. And I also think it will help your fundraising if you do have the confidence of the city of Simi Valley behind you. Knowing what went on the first time, I think that will give you a little bit more substance when you're dealing with and when you're asking for capital campaign funds. And I also do know, banks do like to do loans for CRA, for nonprofits that serve the low and moderate income. So that might be a good thing. Not my bank, but I can find you somebody. That would be a conflict of interest, that's what I said. So I'll help you find somebody. But, so I, I am in favor. I understand both the councilwomen's concerns, and I think we can kind of get around that a little bit. I think the majority of the nonprofits in town, and I know all the community members in town are going to benefit from the Free Clinic. It's been there the entire time I've lived in Simi, and it's one of our greatest secrets, one of our best-kept secrets, and one of our most important things in town, along with the Samaritan Center. Between the two of you, you probably serve the majority of the community in multiple ways. So thank you to both of you. So I am in favor of doing the three years for the, for the Free Clinic. Thank you.
Thank you. I think if you look back in history, it's, it's quite a ways back that this idea, or this dream of getting everybody under one roof began. And it's been a project that's been alive for probably 20-plus years at least. And I won't say it's been here my entire life, but the Free Clinic has been at its current location most of my life. And the, the Free Clinic has served this community so well. And, and it's served those who couldn't otherwise go see a doctor and couldn't get medical care, couldn't get their teeth fixed, couldn't go for mental health assistance, and couldn't go to an attorney and pay regular rates. But it provided a place for everyone in this community to go. I looked at it as a safety net, and I still do. I, I went down there a month or so ago and went through and took a look at the Tappo Street facility. And I was amazed, I'm going, if, if I couldn't make my crazy insurance payment and I had no coverage, I could come here. And guess what? I would see the same quality doctor that I pay to go see. And if this is important enough for my doctor, who I have to wait in line for, Dr. Kurohara, to see him, and then, I, I mean, you know what a doctor's schedule is, they go all day long. And then he goes and spends time at the Free Clinic. That's, there, there's a statement there. There's a statement there. How, how do you leave one office and go to another and do it for nothing? I'll never know. But it's great. And that's so important. It's important to this community. The people I see in that office, it's not that they're poor, it's not that they're homeless, it's, it's, they're just not as fortunate as I am. And they need a place to go also, and they have a place in Simi Valley, and they've had that place for 45 to 48 years. And no questions asked. You walk in the door, you're going to be served. And I look at it, now it's time to, to give back as much as we possibly can. And as far as the mishandling of funds, or the theft of funds, however you want to put it, I think it's best we don't look in the rearview mirror, let's look forward. And that's what we, we have an opportunity to do tonight, is look forward and keep this great establishment going in our city and give them the helping hand that they apparently need. When it comes to the funding, I have maybe one concern, and I'll throw it out to staff. And I, I would like to see the potential, if it's needed, and the city manager can let us know if it's needed, that we hold maybe like $10,000, write it off and commit it to the Free Clinic, but hold it as an emergency fund that we could dive into if somebody comes, like what happened when the Samaritan Center had problems, and that we have a little bit that we can help somebody out with. But at the end of the three years, or at the end of the year, and that money is there, we give that. We pledge it to the Free Clinic. So when I say we hold back just a little bit, I'm not saying keep it from them. I'm saying just hold it in reserve in case it's needed, kind of another safety net. And if that's something that could be easily done, fine. If not, I'm good with it, because this community, if, if we were to hold $10,000 out and the decision was made not to hold it out, I, I think like Betty found, in this community, you run up the flag and ask for help, you're going to get that $10,000 in about 24 hours. So, and we'll get Dr. Kurohara to deliver it for us, because he, he obviously doesn't have enough work. So with that, I think you can tell that I'm in, in support of it and very happy to be in support of it.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I would move that, if we're all done with discussion.
Well, I just have a question. As I understand, as I read the options, we have the option of pledging the amount, well, of doing it annually and revisiting this each year, or we have the option of, in essence, offering in essence, offering three years, but knowing that we would have to pay it upfront, and then it would be repaid to us over three years from Waste Management, if I'm not mistaken.
It would be more of a commit, it would be a commitment, and then we would allocate it on an annual basis, but they'd probably be able to do some type of financing, knowing that that was allocated by the council.
So you're saying Waste, so we wouldn't be wasting, waiting two years for Waste Management to pay the last amount, for instance?
Right. We would, we would pay it as we got it from Waste Management.
Oh, I, okay. So we commit it, but then the funds, okay, are dispersed over time?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, I want to add one little thing. I'm sorry. Um, I talked to the manager, manager of Waste Management, and I inquired about this. And the response was, he trusts this community, this council, to do the correct thing, and that was it. That was his whole recommendation.
Say, go ahead, Mike.
I'm sorry, I just have one more question, since DeeDee mentioned the CDBG money. So my question for staff is, how much is that money? And is that, is that a workaround?
I'd have to defer to, um, Environmental Services staff. That money is administered by a separate division of the city, so I'm not sure what the total dollar amounts are. I think they're somewhere in the couple hundred thousand range, but they're all, it's federal money, so there is a certain amount that's set aside for administration, which goes to offset the cost of city staff for administering that program, as well as capital projects and then programs and services. So there are very kind of stringent rules for each of those categories, and some are on a two-year cycle and some are on a one-year cycle in terms of awarding. I'm not familiar with the details of where they're at right now in their funding process.
We, we can come back on the CDBG, and then there's a percentage even more specific. There's a percentage, I want to say 12% that can be used for, um, I'm not sure if it's 12, but somewhere in that, that can be used for, um, what are called social services, because a lot of it is for capital-type projects, or for housing, or for those types of projects. But there is a certain percentage that can be used for social services. There's also a much more stringent, as many not-for-profits in this room would be able to tell you, there's a much more stringent, um, accountability, because you have to, it's all federal funds, so there's a lot more red tape that the not-for-profit has to go through. And many not-for-profits don't even apply for it because of the red tape that's required with those funds.
Would this project, in your estimation, qualify for those CBG grant? I mean, it, it's development, it's, it's, I'm just curious if that's a funding, a federal funding source for...
I, I, I think there, I, I would have to look at it, I would, the Free Clinic has been eligible for CBG funds in the past. So there are certain elements of this probably that would, would qualify for it. But I think the question was, would CBG be, able to be used for these other not-for-profits? And those not-for-profits, some of them would be eligible, some may not, and some may choose to or not to choose to, based on the red tape that's associated with CBG.
On this, on the CDBG note as well, there's a number of federal rate rules and regulations that apply to capital projects that can increase the cost of construction to comply with the federal mandates. Additionally, with the state of the federal government, there's no guarantee what our future allocations would be, so we don't typically get a signet. Our CDBG funds have been dwindling over the years, so there wouldn't necessarily be the reliability for this as a primary funding source for the request of the Free Clinic, because the cost of their project would likely increase by using federal funds.
Gotcha.
Okay. I would, uh, move that the city council approve awarding the Free Clinic the, uh, CPG funds for this year and next year, all the way until fiscal year '21-'22? Is that what we're looking, so that'd be three years? That's my motion.
I'll second.
With the caveat, I'm sorry, sorry, DeeDee. With the, because I like what Keith said about the keeping summon and reserving case, maybe 10,000 a year, in case we have to do something to bail out maybe the Free Clinic or something. Not bail out, but help. Sorry, you want to put it that way?
It's earmarked for the Free Clinic, but held just in case we have an emergency.
Correct.
But it's, it's their money.
Does that motion make sense, Lonnie?
Yeah, and I guess you'd want to say how much exactly is held back and when it would go to them if it wasn't used.
10,000 at the end of fiscal year '22 dispersment cycle.
Of each year.
Of each year. Sounds good to me.
I'll second that.
Call for the vote.
I want to clarify one thing, it's through, you're simply saying three years, correct?
Right, three years. Minimum of.
Three fiscal years.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll take a minute.
All right, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, the next item on the agenda is 8B, approval of utilization of social media and amended social media policy. And Samantha Argabright is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. The item before you is the approval of using social media and amended social media policy. On Monday, February 4th, 2018, the city council's EGOV committee, whose members are Mayor Protem Kavanagh and Councilmember Judge, convened to discuss the city's current use of social media and opportunities to enhance its use. At the conclusion of the meeting, the committee recommended that the city council consider expanding the city's use of social media and consider a more robust social media policy. As discussed in your staff report, various departments, divisions, and programs of the city currently utilize social media to communicate with the public. However, while there is a city hall Facebook page, it has not been previously authorized to post information of citywide interest. Therefore, the EGOV committee recommends that the city council consider a city Facebook page, Instagram account, and Twitter feed. The EGOV committee recommends that the city's pages be used to provide updates and push out information only, and that the comment feature not be enabled at this time. However, users will be able to share posts. This method will take into consideration the current staff resources available to manage a social media presence, and staff will monitor engagement and report back to the council regarding this approach in approximately six months. Should the city council concur with the EGOV committee's recommendation to move forward with a more robust utilization of social media, staff will engage with the media platforms to create the verified pages on the three recommended platforms. Staff finally has identified areas of the city's social media policy that should be addressed as the social media's presence expands. Recommended amendments to the policy include responding to comments in a timeframe in which to do so, how to respond to a confrontational post or message, and how frequently to post. Additionally, staff recommends an amendment be made to the policy that any administrator be a city staff member, and access to city social media accounts not be granted to board members or volunteers unless previously approved. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Questions, or stuff? Go ahead, Elaine.
I guess my question is, is, as I, as I read through this, um, it's unclear to me whether you, you are, it is being recommended that we enable, that we have comment features or not. I understand the need to update this, but I guess my question is, obviously with Facebook, if you're not allowed to ever comment, it, this discussion elsewhere, reading is that sometimes it's not really utilized. It's just a bulletin board, it's not truly social, interactive social media.
So folks would be able to, um, share posts, um, but if the comment feature is disabled, it would decrease the staff time that would be involved in managing the social media presence in terms of responding to posts and things along those lines. Um, but certainly the council can consider whichever options it wishes. So if council wishes to direct that post be, or that comments be enabled, then staff would obviously take that.
And they could be enabled at any time?
Correct.
And for instance, we could revisit this in a month and say, you know, no one's really...
Yes.
Respond, okay.
I, I think it was, when we were talking about it, it was more a concern on staff time.
Sure.
I would love to get to the point where we can have somebody full-time, just, that's all they do. We just don't have that right now. So I think that was kind of, this was our, um, see what we could do to fit with what we have right now. But I would, I would love to see more, and I know Samantha's aware of that too. So eventually we'll get there. Thank you.
And who's the person on staff that would be responsible? Oh. Hmm. Okay, now I get the bigger picture.
Although, um, I will add a caveat, and that is that we have, um, a position that recently retired, and we're looking at repurposing that position and making it more graphics and more social media-oriented. So that would be a person that, once we finish that job description and recruit that position, would be a major, um, asset in this particular area, but you're probably talking three months down the road.
So if we go forward with this, you would be responsible for building the new Facebook page that, that coalesces everything together?
Correct.
And Twitter? Are we deciding whether we're approving Twitter and Instagram and all of that, or are we, I mean, what is that, what is our decision this evening?
So staff is proposing all three, um, but certainly we can phase those.
And you're comfortable with all three?
If we can phase them. But yes, definitely.
And, and all three of them would be for posting information, not for having a conversation?
Well, and some of the platforms lend themselves more easily to that. Um, but certainly, um, you know, obviously we can accommodate however we need to. So, and, um, one thing that's in the staff report that I didn't just mention is that, ideally, we want to post different content across the different platforms, because having different content on each of the platforms encourages people to follow you on all of the different platforms. Otherwise, if you just cross-post, everything is the same, and there's no incentive to follow you on the different platforms.
And so if I understand correctly, this doesn't change any of the existing media pages? You would be drawing from the police page, for instance, or from all of the pages? It would just, would just be kind of one clearinghouse?
It would be a clearinghouse. Everyone that is already following individual divisions, departments, pages, um, certainly can continue to do so, those will still exist. Um, this would be an opportunity to share that information with residents that are already following those, um, or, um, to also post additional information for departments that may not necessarily have already taken on a Facebook page or a social media presence.
Any other comment or questions? Excuse me.
We had a correspondence, I believe, supplemental to this, where they were concerned that we would be discontinuing stuff off of our website, but that's not going to be the case. We're just adding.
Correct.
Okay, so I thought, just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
And you will, we will have the ability to post links to, on, on all, across all social media platforms? Yes?
Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram is what we're recommending at this point.
I'm, I'm very excited about this. I know, is, when, when I got elected, I mentioned this, I am an avid social media user, and I'm on all three platforms. Um, and just to clarify for my fellow council members here, and, and Mayor Mashburn, you know, Twitter is something that you, you're using when you're there. It's, it's like, uh, it's like a real-time journal, you know? Uh, here at the Read Across America event, come and join us. Mayor Mashburn just read the greatest book, you know? And so it's, it's a real-time platform, that's really what Twitter's used for. A lot of our residents were on Twitter when we had, uh, the, the fires, and they wanted to know where they were being evacuated to and where they weren't. And, um, you know, I applaud, I applaud you for doing this. Um, you know, I, I just think it's amazing, Samantha, that you're taking on this endeavor. Uh, we really need to move forward, and there, there was a study when I got my training by the League of Cities, um, just a, a couple of months ago, that across all ages, from 13 to, you know, all the way up to 80, um, people are on Facebook, people are on Twitter, people are on Instagram, and this is how they're getting their information. Um, Instagram is not as interactive as Facebook, it's more, uh, pushing out information, it's very graphic, it's very, what Eric's, when, um, City Manager Levitt is suggesting with having a graphic designer, that's what engages people on Instagram. Uh, the typical social media user will only spend a maximum of 90 seconds watching a video, um, so it's not something they're going to spend a lot of time, but they do want the information. Um, I know that when I post stuff on Facebook, and I, you know, I'll say, I'm here live at Read Across America, check out these pictures, and people will come down, they're like, oh, we didn't know that, or the Tetcha Truck event. And so it really engages our residents and lets, lets them know to come down and be engaged, and encourages civic engagement, encourages them to be involved in the community activities that we have. So I'm really excited about this. Um, Facebook, uh, you know, is, is used across generations, it's the number one used social media platform, but like I said, Twitter has its uses, Instagram is very visual, um, I've been following the Youth Council's Instagram page, which I was very excited about, um, and I repost that, I repost it, I know I'm not supposed to, but across, uh, social media platforms, because I know most parents are on Facebook, most kids are on Instagram. Um, and so to get the message across from one media platform, from one generation to the next, seeing how, how our neighbors have it, um, having the comments off is, is, I think, choice, I think that's the best choice, the best way to go. Um, I've been talking to a number, anyone who would listen, about how the perception of our city is what's going to enable us to move forward and to grow. Uh, and we have to promote a positive perception of our city. Uh, and unfortunately, there are a lot of social media trolls, um, and they do use Facebook, mainly Facebook. Um, there are some, uh, Simi Valley social media, uh, platforms that are very negative, and all we hear is negative things. I would love for us to put out all the wonderful positive things. What we did tonight, the, the Boy Scouts coming down here, uh, when Grace Brethren came, uh, you know, having someone post a picture on Twitter, you know, um, on Facebook, on Instagram, letting them know, hey, we're recognizing what is happening in our community and the residents and the contributions that they make, and the events and activities that we do. I think it's just going to make us more attractive to businesses, more attractive to residents, and it's going to increase our value and our, um, you know, viability as a city in the future. So I applaud this, Samantha, I think it's amazing, um, and I, I will be here to support you. I, I will post the picture of your new commissioner if you want, uh, tonight, because that, that is the platform, that's how we follow what we, what we're doing, where we're at, where we're going, and what we've done. Uh, and it really is like a digital scrapbook, um, more than anything. Um, so I really applaud this. I would, I would love to see where it is in six months, how it works with comments. I know there is a, a First Amendment issue, I had a whole workshop on it, lots of questions. But I think it would increase, um, the, the positivity of all the wonderful things that happen in Simi Valley. I think people should know how wonderful a community this is and what we do.
Okay, let's see, comments. I think you made yours. Mike, comment? No comment? Elaine?
I, I think it's a, a very positive move, and thank you too for spending time as a committee evaluating that. Thank you, appreciate it.
And I too like the, uh, the no-comment portion, to, at least for the launching. I, I know what my, my experience has been on Facebook alone, so I can imagine what would happen, uh, when you have all three. So, okay, with that, looking for a motion.
I move to approve the creation and utilization of a Simi Valley City Government Facebook page, Instagram and Twitter account for the purpose of posting events, activities, general information, and educational posts about the city, and approve an amended social media policy to be more reflective of this more active presence.
Second.
Can you, pardon, can it be specified if you want comments or not? I guess that, the policy does appear to allow comments, if you don't want that, I guess you'd have to say so.
I'll amend it to add, we are not allowing comments at this time.
Wait a second.
Call for the vote.
Mr. Mayor and City Council members, the next item on the agenda is Agenda Item 9A, City Council Member Reports.
Okay. Okay, uh, reports. Elaine.
Can I go first? Just, just briefly, um, I wanted to thank the fellow, uh, city council members for our retreat, where we had quite a animated discussion about our goals and objectives, and I think some great things came out of that on February 27th, and I look forward to that, um, going forward with, with that, with those discussions. Participated in some wonderful Read Across America programs, and what a great, great thing that we have such support in Simi Valley at our schools for those lovely programs. Got to read at Burlwood Elementary and with the mayor, and, um, Councilwoman Lewevanos at the library, and that was a great experience. I'd like to commend our new businesses that had, um, grand openings or, or played against sports, which we attended, 25, and...
Twenty-five years of being here in Simi Valley and celebrating that event, and also the grand opening of the Bombshell Beauty Bar. Lots of good things happening here. Appreciated being able to attend the Simi Valley Education Foundation Gala this past Saturday, and all of the many community members that work so hard to raise funds for education in Simi Valley. Lots of great work is being done, and lots of financial support was being shown to further the projects of, that it's, that are needed by our schools and, and by their students. And so I commend our community and for all of their work in that regard. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Councilmember Lewvenos.
I, too, got to attend the retreat on Wednesday, February twenty-seventh, with my fellow council members, and Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. And on Saturday, March second, got to wear my, had an excuse to wear my Dr. Seuss sweater, finally, after all these years, again, for the Simi Valley Library Read Across America, and I, and I did post that on my Facebook page. People could come. On Tuesday, March fifth, I attended the Youth Council meeting, and they're getting ready for the Youth Council Summit, so I'm really excited about that. And on Thursday, March seventh, I attended the Clean Power Alliance meeting in the City of Calabasas, in a remote, remote location. I'm happy to report that Simi Valley's default tier is lean power, that only six-point-five-two percent of our residents opted out, which is really great. There were less than ten percent of the customers for the Clean Power Alliance opted out, which is great, because that means that more than ninety percent opted in and decided to be part of providing clean power energy for our future. And so I'm really, really excited about that, and glad that we are moving forward with our clean power. I just wanted to let residents know that if they had a general rate, and they wanted to change to a tier rate, that you could still contact SoCal Edison and let them know. Is that correct, Samantha? That if you wanted to opt out of the general rate, you wanted to shift. So if you want to do that, do not contact the Clean Power Alliance, contact SoCal Edison, and they will help you out. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Councilmember Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the twenty-seventh, I was also happy to attend our retreat, and I was happy to report out that we picked our interim city manager to take the place, to help out, once Eric leaves. Congratulations to Brian Gabler on that. Um, well, it's, it's actually tentative right now, but it's, that's who we chose. We're still waiting on it. There's paperwork. There's lawyers. It's impressive. On Friday, I attended VCTC, Ventura County Transportation Committee. Not too much to report out of that. Nothing new on the Caltrans forum. You know, we're, you know, we're still waiting, there're going to be some work done on the freeways, but it shouldn't cause too much of a delay this summer. It's just a bunch of repaving and some guardrail replacement. That was about it out of VCTC. On Monday, March fourth, I did attend teleconferencing, ran a subcommittee meeting with, through SCAG, and again, not much came out of that. Our numbers in Simi Valley, like I said, are still good. We've said that, we also talked about that at the, at the, I think we talked a little bit about it at the retreat. Our numbers are good, so hopefully, they'll stay good, unless, unless the state changes something between now and then. Thursday, March twenty-seventh, I attended the Southern California Association of Government Regional Council and Transportation Committees on behalf of Ventura County Transportation Committee. Did have an interesting thing that happened at the SCAG meeting on Thursday. There was a, we saw a presentation by the City of Monrovia, and I know Monrovia's a little smaller than us, and Monrovia's also in the Los Angeles County area, which means they have access to Prop M funds, which are a sales tax increase dedicated to transportation. Monrovia has a unique partnership with Lyft right now, where they're using Lyft to augment their ADA paratransit service, which I think is fascinating, and I think is something we should seriously look at. Of course, this doesn't take the place of our ADA. What it would do is allow people that use our ADA service right now, which are seniors and anybody that is ADA certified through the state of California or the county of Ventura, that is not, you know, it, it would be something like, if you're able to ride in a regular car, you could use this, this service, which makes it amazing, because we have these buses that hold five, six people, and they're designed for wheelchair-bound people. And they're going around picking up one person that could ride in a regular car. So the savings for the city could be substantial. So it's something I, I've talked to the city manager, I sent him a, I think I, I think I texted you about it, and so we're going to look into this. And I also had Darren Kettle in my office this morning, talking about it, because Darren's very interested in this, too, as far as presenting it to the cities, because right now, the VCTC does not, does not really do ADA services, other than verifying that people are allowed to use ADA. Enough with that. Okay. Now, moving on, Friday, March eighth, I attended the Chamber Breakfast, and what do we have after that? I had something else Friday night, but I can't remember. So that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Kalavon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended the retreat as well as everybody else. One of the things I did happen to do on March seventh, I had the opportunity to go to Moore Park College, their Performing Arts Center, and see their newest production of Spamalot. It was outstanding. It was their opening night. I advise or recommend anybody to go. It's in our backyard. It's a great performance. It's a lot of fun. It's a beautiful theater, and it's a lot more cost-effective than the Pantages, even though I love the Pantages. So on the March eighth, I, myself and Mayor Mashburn, had a subcommittee meeting with our assist, current Assistant Man, uh, City Manager, Brian Gabler. And then on March ninth, I think it was called Be the Change You Want to Be, or?
Be the Change You Want to See.
Be the Change You Want to See Volunteer Day at the Samaritan Center. So I was there at nine o'clock, and Betty kindly let me pull weeds out front in the yard, so that was very nice. I needed the exercise. But myself and about twenty-five other volunteers, first thing in the morning. It was really nice to see people out there that I've never met before. Everyone was excited to be out there and to be helping, introducing themselves, saying, oh, what brought you here? Facebook brought a lot of them here, as well as the acorn. I heard that from both, sorry, Mike. But it was really a good event, and I hope you had more attendees in the afternoon. Our mayor came by to say hello and make sure we were all working hard, so we appreciate that. And on the ninth, the evening, I also attended the Simi Valley Education Foundation's Gala. That was a wonderful event. The entertainment were all students from all of our high schools, and I think there were even a couple of the middle schools, but, and they were all fantastic. My favorite part was actually the surprise performance of the three high school chorus teachers did a performance together, and they were wonderful, so I wanted to commend them. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I, too, went to the council retreat. And then on Thursday, I attended the Simi Valley Tourism Marketing District meeting at the Chamber of Commerce, and things are going well with that group. And I have to say, a lot of the work that's going forward from the tourism folks is social media, and they're putting out, I think I provided reports to everybody from the different social media platforms. I learned a new word tonight. Thank you, Ruth. And so that's what a lot of the work's been. On March first, attended the Boys and Girls Club Annual Recognition Luncheon. That was a lot of fun, and I just have to say a big thank you to the Boys and Girls Club for what they do. It's a great group. They do an awful lot, and their presentation there, too, was mainly the, I, I don't like calling kids kids. That just doesn't seem appropriate. They're young adults. They're smart individuals, and they did a great job, and it was great seeing them perform and get up and accept their awards with the class and dignity that they did. Let's see here. Okay, Tuesday, March fifth, met with the Parks and Recreation District, the district manager, and one of the board members, Elaine Freeman, and that was the beginning of what I committed to, and I think the council's looking for, for us to do, and is start meeting with the school district folks and the park district folks. So this was the first step. It, it was a productive meeting. I, I think it was good. We agreed that we're going to continue to meet, and then the next phase, we'll invite the school district folks and get them involved. But overall, I think it's, it's very positive. On March seventh, had a meeting with some chamber members regarding the fireworks show for Fourth of July, and I think what we're going to end up with is multiple choices for the council to make in the, the March twenty-fifth meeting that should be by then, that we'll have the options to choose from. And so I think it's going to come off well. On Friday, March eighth, I was on that same subcommittee and met with Brian, and we're moving forward on that. Brian being the select for the interim city manager's position. And on February twenty-eighth, March second, and March eighth, I participated in Read Across America at the different schools, Burlwood, Sycamore, and at the library, and that was so much fun. I mean, it, it makes it worth it. You, you do a lot of things that you think, wow, here we are, meeting, little bit of stress, got to study and all that. Here you go in and you read a book, and it's to these individuals that appreciate you being there. Thank you. And it, it, it was just a heck of a lot of fun. Saturday, March ninth, I went to the Samaritan Center, thinking that I was going there for a little bit of a conference and to give a hello talk and what have you. Well, that part of it got kind of omitted, and so I was invited to go out in the front, where there were numerous people on their hands and knees picking weeds. And lo and behold, I went over to this lady who was on her hands and knees picking weeds, and her bag was actually full of weeds. And I introduced myself, and it was none other than Mayor Pro Tem, Dee Dee Kalavon, and she, she put out a lot of work. And so that was, that was quite a deal, and thank you to the Ventura County Star. They were there, taking photographs and did a nice article on that, on that exercise for some of us, and
I have a picture of you.
...presentation for others. But anyway, that's my report.
Next item on the agenda, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members, is Nine B for requests for future city council agenda items.
Any requests?
I have a request. We, well, you received a letter, Mayor Mashburn, but it was addressed to you and the City of Simi Valley from the County of Ventura, County Executive Office, Michael Powers, County Executive Officer. I would request that we consider writing a letter in support of the Ventura County Fairgrounds Board of Directors, cease contracting for new gun shows. They specifically, in a quote, "As elected representatives of the people of Ventura County, our board respectfully requests support from you and your fellow council members to work together to help cease the contracting for additional gun shows at the Ventura County Fairgrounds." So they're asked specifically for our support as city council. It is not infringing on anyone's Second Amendment right. It is simply acknowledging the tragedy that happened at Thousand Oaks, the Barter Lane shooting, and I would request that this be put on the agenda.
Okay, we'll put it down and look for a, put it on a future agenda?
Are we ready for the next item?
Okay, yes.
All right, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members, the next item on the agenda is the Economic Development Report, and Brian Gabler is here for this presentation.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, briefly tonight, I, following up on my last report in January, we're proud to report that Black Bear Diner has initiated construction on their new restaurant location at Mountain Gate Plaza, and we stick with a estimate of about a late summer opening for that restaurant. A twelve-thousand-square-foot building on Guardian Street recently sold to a business relocating from Newbury Park. The business, which is not wanting to be identified yet, is a bio-science company that does various testing in the medical field. Staff recently had a discussion with them regarding their planned tenant improvements, as well as the permit process that they need to go through. We continue to have discussions with various hotel developers looking at Simi Valley. The focus of interest is, right now, is extended estate product of, of various different brands. Several locations are under discussion. However, the corner of Arranjado Road and Simi Town Center Way is a likely candidate right now. On Wednesday this week, the Simi Valley Planning Commission will consider Zebek Realities project on Easy Street. The proposal is for six buildings with approximately four-hundred-and-eighty thousand square feet of industrial space. This development will provide hundreds of jobs to the community and bring new business opportunities to the city as well. And as for Simi Valley's vacancy rate, the current vacancy rate for the six-point-two-million square feet of retail space in Simi Valley is six-point-five percent, up from the six-percent rate in January. And for the two-point-seven-million-square-feet of office space in the city, the vacancy rate today is as of, is fifteen-point-three percent, up from fourteen-point-nine percent in January. On the industrial and flex side, the vacancy rate for the eight-million-square-feet here in town is three percent, which is unchanged since December of last year. And lastly, the latest release on unemployment numbers from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics shows that Ventura County's unemployment rate for January was four-point-four percent, up from the December rate of three-point-seven percent. Ventura County lost fifty-seven-hundred jobs in January. Three hundred were in the farm sector, which leaves the county exactly unchanged in the farm sector from one year ago. The balance of forty-five, fifty-four-hundred is spread across many non-farm sectors. What's mostly concerning is that the county is down year-over-year by thirty-five-hundred jobs in total. The county has more unemployed workers than a year ago, and unemployment is up, though only marginally, from four-point-three percent in January of eighteen to four-point-four percent in January of nineteen. Most of the decline in January was due to the shedding of jobs in the retail sector. While this is a normal pattern after the holiday season, the number of jobs at eighteen-hundred is more pronounced this year. And while the professional and business sector is up thirteen-hundred jobs year-over-year, there were five-hundred jobs lost in the sector in January. And further, the government sector lost eight-hundred jobs in January. On first thought, it was believed that the lot, that a lot of this might have been due to the federal government shutdown. However, the subtech, subsectors showed the, the drop was only a hundred, in, hundred jobs in the federal government employment, so that wasn't it. Most of the loss was in local education, a trend seen annually in January, not likely regular, non-regular jobs shut down over the holiday. What is more concerning is that the local, uh, local government education is down three-hundred jobs year-over-year. This includes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Mr. Gabler.
Just one question. In your statistics on, on building, on our, our habitability, is the Farmers Building included in the statistics as far as the five-story? Is that, is vacancy, is that included in your vacancy numbers?
It is. It's included in that fifteen-point-three percent on the, on the office market, yes.
On the office market? And if that were taken out of your report, what does that?
Actually, if you take out the, the Farmers Building, and although, and if you take out the building that's currently being demolished at seventeen-fifty-seven Tapo Canyon Road, which is a hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand square feet, take those two out, the rate drops to below five percent.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Ready to adjourn? We're going to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of retired Simi Valley Police Department Sergeant Fred James Parry Mahad, Ma, Ma-Davion, excuse me, I'm sorry about that, Parry Ma-Davion, and Richard Leonard. Meeting's adjourned.